I got it, so that's mine today.
To the phone at seven twenty.
Yeah, well, I'm going by that. It's probably seven thirty. Good evening, Washington courthouse. It is seven thirty P. M. on November eighth, twenty twenty-three time for our first regular meeting of November. At this time, I will offer the invocation and Mr. Johnson will lead us into pledge. If you're able, would you please stand? Dear God, we come to you this evening just knowing that we are humans. And therefore, we are sinful, and we make mistakes. We sometimes hate when we shouldn't hate. But God, we know that you want us to love in place of hate. You want us to think in place of act. And God, just give us the ability tonight to think before we act. And give us the ability to continue to work together as people who care about this city. We ask all these things in the name of your son. Amen?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Hawk.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Christman.
Here.
Lynch.
Here. I have the pleasure of two of my very favorite students. Oh, I say that every time. Two of my favorite students are here this evening. Stand up, Kendall, and tell them who you are.
I'm Kendall.
Kendall what?
Kendall what?
Kendall what, yes. And Layla.
I'm Layla Moore.
And they're both excellent, seriously, excellent students and excellent young ladies. And I love having them in class. And they make my morning get bright and early every morning. Okay, approval of the minutes from our council meeting on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Did anybody see any changes we need to make?
Yes.
Okay.
And the first paragraph is Mr. Kendra and none of this should be Mrs.
Kendra didn't even catch that? Mine says Ms. On the first.
Mister.
No, on the first paragraph.
On the first paragraph.
I said Mister.
See, I read the second paragraph, too.
Well, we'll change that. Thank you, Mr. Hawk. Back to Ms. Hernandez. This is now back to Ms. Okay, any others? Do we have a motion to accept with that change?
With that change, I will make a motion that we accept the minutes as printed.
Second.
Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Any communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
We have two reports of council committees tonight. First is economic strategies. Who's doing that one?
Uh, well, Kendra can.
Caleb started that meeting, but then Kendra came in. Kendra is actually the chair of that committee, so Kendra, go ahead.
I already see my name spelled wrong. Kelly. I'm just giving you a rough that.
Kendra.
She has.
I see it.
Oh, she did?
Kendra. The Economic Strategies and Cooperation Committee met in the City Council Chambers of One O Five North Main Street on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at five P. M. Mrs. Caleb Johnson.
Oh, nothing, huh?
I'm sorry if it missed Miss.
Hernandez presided because she could come in. Mr. Caleb Johnson presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Christman, council member; Ms. Kendra Hernandez, council member; Mr. Steve Schultz, council member; Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member; Mr. Jim Blair, council member; Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson; Mr. Jody Langley, Assistant Fire Chief; Mrs. Chelsea Baker, Economic Development Director; Mr. Joseph Denon, City Manager; and Mr. Sean Remington, citizen. Number one, the committee reviewed progress with industrial development. The administration advised the committee of recent open projects. Number two, the committee noted the status of various development projects within the downtown area. The administration noted that a new business block had been distributed to the Humane Society to commemorate the Humane Society's new location. Number three, the committee benefited from our review regarding downtown events. The committee noted the upcoming Pumpkin and Spice and Everything Nice Shop Hop that will be held on November tenth, twenty twenty-three. Number four, the committee noted the upcoming downtown live event that will be held on December ninth, twenty twenty-three. Number five, the committee reviewed progress with commercial development. The administration noted that Hadler Properties had submitted multiple proposals for vacant properties under their ownership. Number six, the administration advised the committee that out of fifty applications received, twenty-five applications had been approved and checks distributed for the twenty twenty-three facade grant program. Number seven, the administration advised the committee of the upcoming B. R. and E. visits. Number eight, Mrs. Baker noted that Mr. Anthony Sanor Sanor had been hired for the position of Fayette County Community Development. Number nine, the committee recommended that the administration proceed with the continuation of a two-year agreement with J. R. G. Enterprises. Respectfully submitted, myself, chairperson, Ms. Kelly Ford, Recording Secretary.
Thank you, Kendra. Uh, discussion, any changes or any discussion? If not, does someone want to make a motion to accept?
Well, with those changes, we got Mrs. Caleb Johnson changed over to Mr. Caleb Johnson. Then I will say, well, as they are printed or changed.
Do we have a second?
Don't do anything about Kendra?
Oh, wait a minute. Keed, then. Keed, right.
We'll change that to Kendra.
Change that to Kendra.
Now, does somebody want to second it?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz. Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Next is finance and personnel. I think Mr. Blair.
Yeah, I think that's.
Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. City of Washington courthouse finance and personnel meeting held October the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. The Finance and Personnel Committee met in the City Council Chambers of One O Five North Main Street on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at six P. M. Mr. Jim Blair presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Ted Hawk, council member; Mr. Steve Schultz, council member; Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member; Mr. Jim Christman, council member; Ms. Kendra Hernandez, council member; Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson; Mrs. Christina Collins, Finance Director; Mr. Joseph Denon, City Manager; Mr. Jody Langley, Assistant Fire Chief; Mr. Sean Remington, citizen; and Mrs. Sylvia Call, citizen; and Mr. Tony Chadwick of the Pintura Company. The committee benefited from a report of the statement of cash for the month ending September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The committee also benefited from a report on the investments of the City of Washington courthouse. The administration advised the committee that the audit had been released and noted that the financial information of the city was presented fairly with no material deficiencies. Mr. Denon updated the committee on revenue collections. The administration noted that as of October the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, the revenue estimates were on target. The committee benefited from a review of the community reinvestment area given by Mr. Denon. The administration noted that the concept of record digitalization. Is that okay?
That's good.
Hard to say, but.
Yeah, was being explored to make research of older records easier. Mr. Blair requested that the discussion remain on the next Finance and Personnel agenda. The committee noted that an open position in the Income Tax Department. The committee also recommended that the administration proceed with the continuation of a two-year agreement with J. R. G. Enterprises not to exceed four thousand dollars per month. The committee recommended that the administration continue with trail progress and not deviate from the approved route. The committee noted that evaluations were in process from the Humane Resource. How about Human?
Human.
We'll change that to Human.
Human, yeah, okay.
Department. Mr. Tony Chadwick, a representative from Pintura Company, addressed the committee and spoke regarding inclusive playground equipment. The committee reviewed the renderings distributed regarding playground equipment. A discussion of the playground equipment then occurred. Several observations were made concerning playground equipment. No conclusion was discernible. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Jim Blair, Chairperson, Finance and Personnel; Mrs. Kelly Ford, Recording Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Blair.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Someone want to make a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion that we accept the meetings from Finance and Personnel.
With the change of.
Yes, with the change.
Human.
Steve, you're seconding.
Yes, I'll second, yes.
Steve's seconding, Kelly.
Okay, thanks.
And roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Mr. City Manager, you are up to bat.
Thank you. It is very short and to the point tonight. If you have bag leads, you need to call six-three-six-two-three-eighty, and we will be happy to get rid of them. Loose leaves, if you put those out by the street, we will be along to get those, and you do not have to call service. In the bag leads, please do not put trash or junk. It's just going to be leaves, okay? Oh, service would very much appreciate that. Would like to thank all the participants in the election. Uh, you know, certainly the candidates and everybody that took the time to vote. And would like to remind everybody, if my recollection is correct, you got two days to get rid of your political socks. Uh, so you need to go out and collect those and get those taken down. And would like to thank service for their work with the lights downtown. We've had time change, so they have been on and they look lovely. And would like to remind everybody that Friday is Veterans Day. So if you have the opportunity to congratulate a veteran and express your gratitude for their service, you are very much encouraged to do so.
Any questions for Mr. Denon?
Just a couple of things. I really think it's great that we do the lights downtown. I'd like them to be all year, but whatever.
The tree grows, and that's the kind of problem.
And also, I saw somebody the other day blowing leaves to the street with a leaf blower, and they weren't stopping at the curb. They were blowing them out in the middle of the street.
You shouldn't do that.
You might remind people that that ends up going down the catch basins and into the creek and floods everything up, so.
There was a catch basin that they rebuilt oh, probably about two weeks ago, and I was walking past it the other day, and interestingly, it was already filled up with leaves. And that was completely cleaned out, ready to go. But yeah, you do end up in catch basins, and, uh, folks, that causes nuisance flooding in your neighborhood. Uh, that just, leaves plug it up, the mazes as well.
Anything else? Speaking of Veterans Day, Jim and Ted, we got to honor the gentleman who was a hundred years old, the only veteran of World War II still in Fayette County. And I'm trying to think of his name, and I'm drawing a blank. You remember Ted?
That's two blanks.
Who?
Carrington or something like that.
I don't know, but Ted and Vic took care of it.
Yes.
George anywhere.
George Carrington.
Carrington.
Hundred-year-old veteran of World War II, and that was fun doing that.
That was.
We named a day in Washington courthouse after him.
Anyway. I have one question for Joe, actually, because, um, sorry I'm a little late asking this, Joe, but, um, a couple of weeks ago, I remember that there was a question about some strap on a swing in a playground. Do we have an update on that?
Uh, yeah, and it's kind of interesting. The part that service ordered still isn't here. And then I purchased the strap from the website that still isn't here. Uh, so we creatively disassembled a child's car seat, and that is the strap that is on it now. So when one of the pieces parts comes in, we will get rid of the car seat strap and replace it with the one that's supposed to be there.
Very creative.
Yeah, and not. I don't know if I should have told the attorney that. You wanted to know.
He was yawning at the time.
Wait, wait, wait. There's two attorneys here. Anyway, Caleb and Mark, you didn't hear that?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? You want to get Mr. Denon in trouble for? Uh, Director of Finances, isn't your normal night to make, and are you just here? You don't have a report, do you?
No, I don't have a report.
Very good. City Attorney, do you have a report?
Briefly, I want everyone to know, uh, in the public that we have, we are begun to press criminal charges for junk being accumulated in people's yards. Old lawn mowers, bicycles, old washing machines, old dryers. All those things need to be taken out and put at the dump. So it's a misdemeanor of the fourth degree, carries with it thirty days in jail, and up to two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine. So we've already filed some complaints, and we will a lot of planning on filing some more in the next two weeks. So just for everyone's knowledge.
Do antiques count as junk?
If they're in the backyard and they're in a pile, it's junk.
Okay.
One man's treasure is another man's junk. Who determines if it's junk? Do you, Mr. Attorney?
We're going to determine if it's junk. It's sitting in the backyard, and it's in a pile, and it's been there, and there's grass.
That's a good point.
We're going to make that determination.
If it's worth anything, somebody's already picked it up.
Exactly.
Good point. Okay, anything else? Thank you, Mr. Denon and Mr. Attorney and Christina. We're glad you're here. And, um, I didn't have any local residents or taxpayers, so. Did we miss someone? Uh, we'll move to legislation previously introduced. We have ordinance number ten, twenty twenty-three, which has been tabled. Mr. Johnson.
I moved to table ordinance number ten, twenty twenty-three indefinitely, which would declare the question lost.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that, yes.
I, I think that's all we need to do, right, Mr. Pitstick? Okay, any discussion? And Kelly, roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
I don't read a table of ordinance directly. I didn't think I did. Okay.
Okay, uh, then we have new legislation in writing. And for my students, when it's a resolution, there has to be two votes on it. And when it's, uh, so that's what we're doing tonight is a resolution, number R. forty-three, twenty twenty-three. This is first reading.
I'll make a motion that we put up Resolution number R. forty-three, twenty twenty-three, point first reading. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R. forty-three dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, City Manager of the City of Washington courthouse, to enter into an agreement for professional services with J. R. G. Consulting LLC, doing business as Enterprise Advisory Group.
And had it been an ordinance, we would have to vote three times. We don't have any others tonight. So we are to the miscellaneous section of our meeting.
Mr. Chairman, we do have an executive session, I believe, tonight, so.
We do.
I don't know what we.
But that's after miscellaneous.
I understand.
I need, we need to have an executive session for two personnel items, which I just found out about today. And so if you will go along with me, it will not take long. But I think it's things you will be interested in, and I just found out today. So I couldn't tell you ahead of time.
Oh, thank you very much.
Anyway, uh, so Caleb, what do you got for miscellaneous?
Well, um, I think there might have been an election. It was. So congratulations to, uh, the two up here, and also, uh, it's a missed call. And also, I just want to take a moment. Um, I know Kendra is not running again, but thank you for all of your time that you spent here in the city and what you plan to continue doing. I know that you care very much about this community. And, uh, you know, what we do up here, it's a lot of sacrifice, and I know that, so thank you.
Thanks.
Well, I'll skip Kendra for a second. Steve?
Oh, me? Well, I do have a couple of things. You see, I jot it down a couple of things here. Yes, uh, and I also want to congratulate Mr. Christman, Mr. Blair, and Mrs. Call for your, uh, your win to have and start the new four years on the City Council. That'd be fantastic, so. And a little side note, I had coffee this morning with the Red Beach Committee, and they decided, they said they wanted to, Joe, uh, thank you, Joe, Denon, Rod Bryant, Mark Pitstick, anyone that was working on that committee that are working on the building at One Fourteen Court Street here to get the back put back in it. So they all said, I had to jot it down here on a napkin, what they said. So here's what they said in response to, they said, I can't read that part. Well, they said, I can't read that. Now, this last, I can't read that, but right here. Oh, thanks. Also, I want to tell you, heroes do not wear capes. They wear doll tags in light of Veterans Day coming up, so.
I don't know about your first thing, but that's very good.
So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Girls, do you know Addie Schultz? She has to put up with this all the time, because that's her grandmother. Now, Kendra, you want to say something?
Um, I just want to remind, I know Veterans Day is Friday. It's also our shop hop, and, um, just happened to fall that way. For the holiday open houses, so you'll see lots of Christmas hitting because the holiday season's starting for merchants that are in retail. Um, it starts five o'clock, goes to eight P. M. So, um, we need to support our local businesses at Christmas, so try to find gifts at your local place first and then wherever you prefer. And then, you know, you can take it outside of Fayette County, but I can't stress that enough. I think it's been a hard year economically for small businesses, so, um, support those so we don't lose any downtown.
Very good. Jim, uh, Christman, what do you got?
Not much, just like to, uh, address everybody that even ran for office, where it's not easy to put yourself out there. After seven, eight times, I find I'm not used to it.
Took the hang of it.
Finally, took me a while. I'd like to thank everybody voting for me, too. I'm surprised that for this many years that I still be elected. Anyway, thanks to everybody. That's all.
Ted, you're writing notes. Can you read yours like Steve?
I almost, I had something important to say and almost forgot, and then it hit me, so I had to write it down.
Go ahead. Say it.
I think we should appreciate the people that man the voting booths, uh, the polling places. Uh, my wife did a little bit of work down there on Monday evening, and she had to be there at five-thirty yesterday and didn't get home till about nine o'clock. So, uh, she was one of the ones that took the ballots up to the board of elections. She's, they were at, she was at, uh, South Side Church. But anyway, she said that she and, uh, she's a Republican. And Sue Burnside is a Democrat. And she said she was actually a pretty nice lady. And so they, they have fun, the two mixes are in those, uh, during that day, and they enjoy themselves, and that's, that's kind of a fashion in politics, but I thought that was good. She turned out okay.
The girl?
I think that's.
Yeah, I think that's great. The girls can tell you that I'm always emphasizing to our young people to look at both sides of issues, not just think of things from one side. And so, anyway. Mr. Blair, what have you got?
Well, I also have, uh, impressed with the Veterans Day celebrations that are offered. Mr. Denon, I want to thank Mr. Schultz. He and I were, I believe, the two only council that have served in the military. Thank you for your service, Steve. And, uh, also, your, uh, Kelly's son is currently serving in the Marine Corps. I thank him very much for his service. My son, while right there, he retired from the Air Force. He's an Air Force guy, too. Air Force?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Thank you very much for your service. And then also, this is, uh, I guess a legal plug. I was eating at the Rusty Cake today, and the waitress told me that, of course, you know, you show your veteran's card, and they give you the discount. That if I knew of any veterans, Friday, you get free prime rib and a drink of your choice on the house. So Steve? I'll be there if you. Yeah, you will. And I'll even eat the prime rib. Okay, all right, okay. Which is very nice. I don't know of any other restaurants that's doing that in town. Maybe so, but they were very open about that, and that's much appreciated. And, uh, I believe that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I think, uh, it's good, Jim, for all veterans, except those who tell bad jokes. I would also, uh, say that to kind of parrot what Caleb and others have said. Congratulations, Mr. Blair. You just were elected for your second time.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
And I think that's excellent. Uh, congratulations, Sylvia. We look forward to having you join us in January. Kendra, there were nine hundred and one people, persons who voted for you.
Yes.
That tells me something. There are a lot of people out there who appreciate what you've done for this city, even though you made it clear you weren't running. And so congratulations to you, because I think that's a very, very, very important thing to point out, that some people are, nine hundred and some people are very appreciative of what you've done for this city, for the downtown and everything. So I say the same thing, anyway. And then I told Jim Christman, you never say never, but I'm going to say something. I don't think anybody will ever be elected eight times to City Council, besides you.
Is it eight times?
Eight. Jim, that is amazing, the amount of service you have given to this city.
Well, I got paid for it.
What I, what I know is you didn't get paid much. No, I'm serious. Eight times. Thank you for your service. And thank you, guys, who serve in the military and our country. You deserve thanks. And thank you, guys, who serve in the military and our country. You deserve thanks, too.
Mister Chairman, may I make one?
You sure can.
I don't believe I'll live to serve eight terms. So congratulations.
I also congratulate, um, I want to congratulate Mister Camp, Ms. Downing, and Mrs. Lynch for being elected to the school board. There's one thing I note, people out there in Washington Courthouse, not many people are running for office. And I've always, even when they're running against me, I've always encouraged people to run. And I don't care whether it's school board, city council, or whatever. We need more people who will step up and run. And so to those who do, I'm with Jim, even the ones who do's. Thank you for giving it a shot. Um, anyway. Now, we need to go into executive session. I think I can promise you it'll be short, but it's important, or I wouldn't ask you. Uh, and so will somebody make a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go to executive session for personnel issues.
Second.
Okay, and roll call, Kelly.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes, we are in executive session as of eight.